Good evening and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of Wednesday, May 21, 2025. At this time, I'd like to announce that our next public scheduled meeting is Wednesday, June 18, 2025. And at this time, I'd ask everyone if you could please rise to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask everyone just to remain standing for a moment. Typically, I ask for a moment of silence and observance of our soldiers past and present, but tonight, it's for a special moment. It's in honor of a gentleman who was a true public servant, who basically sat here, the very seat that I am, and served as chairman on this board probably for more than a decade. He was a member of this board for several decades. And I ask that we have a short moment of silence for him and to honor him for his service and for the person that he was. His name was Ray Souza. And I just learned from my colleague here that Mr. Ray Souza was also a veteran of our armed forces. I'm not sure which division, but he was a veteran. The Navy. All right. So moving on. This meeting is being recorded by Dartmouth Community Media. And moving on to the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, it's a continued case. It's variance case ZAV 25-3, and it was continued from May 7, 2025. The petitioner in this case is John Romanelli. The owner is Joseph Machado. The subject property is 26 Onyx Drive, also known as map 135 lot 57, and the property is located within a single residence A district. We've already waived the reading of the abutters list. And the petitioner in this case is seeking a variance proposing to build an 18-foot by 36-foot detached garage with living space above with a four-foot setback from a side property line. The house was built in 1975, therefore requires a 10-foot side and rear setback, and is seeking relief under Article 375-7.4D 4AB exemptions from setback requirements. So gentlemen, I'm not sure if you remember this one, but this is one in which we had some concern as to whether or not there was a designation for this as an ADU and what the interpretation might have been from the building inspector. And I believe, Mr. Schuber, that you had indicated at the last hearing that you felt most comfortable by continuing it so that you could have a brief conversation with the building inspector so that you understood what his thought was or what his mindset was in this, given that I believe his response or his denial letter was silent as to whether or not he was interpreting this as an ADU. So if you can provide any type of elaboration on that.
Yes, so basically, we had, we all had a concern whether this was an ADU accessory dwelling unit or not, because we had some conflicting information, as you said, correct, you know, on the review didn't mention anything but the ADU, but then on the architectural plans and some of the comments that we had from DPW mentioned the ADU unit. So I did call the building inspector. I spoke with him today, and he got back to me, you know, with my questions, and he said, he confirmed indeed that this was an ADU unit. So basically, we have to look at this in terms of, we were concerned about whether to set a precedent for this or not, allowing an ADU unit within the certain distance. But again, it's a variance case, so we can take a look and see, you know, if this meets the criteria of the state's statutory for a variance.
Okay.
But it's an ADU, so.
All right. However, the concern was that the fact that they were seeking a four-foot setback and given the sort of the fact that ADUs are new to us, I don't think we've granted one and maybe have been one before, but this one is specifically requesting significant relief well within the 10-foot setback. However, we do say repeatedly, and it's what we practice, is that we look at these on a case-by-case basis. I do know that there was a gentleman here the last time who had spoken. It wasn't necessarily an objection to it, but had concerns. But the immediate abutter wasn't here, which would be the abutter closest.
To the east, no, to the west.
To the west, closest to the west of the proposed addition structure. And they didn't seem to have any concerns, at least they didn't voice them. So I guess at this point in time, is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the neighbor is here. He wanted to speak in favor of it.
Great. So, well, let me just finish up. So at least the last time, it didn't seem, but I've just been told that there is someone who is, that is the immediate abutter may want to speak. Is there anything else we think we need to cover as far as topic in order to bring us up to speed?
No, well, the only thing, the last time we were here, we talked about the possibility of it being right up against the house. But I guess there was an issue with not having it right up against the house? And I don't know. I don't know whether he, did you look into that issue of putting the building, attaching it to the house, in other words?
Well, if you're going to speak, you got to come up to the podium. You got to identify yourself, please. Name and address, please.
Machado, 26 Onyx Drive. So I had spoken last time. Aesthetically, it's very hard to attach it. Not only that, we have the gas pipe for the fireplace on the inside, and we would have to remove all the windows on that side of the house, so drastically change the original house.
I remember you saying that.
Yeah, we're hoping to keep it.
You say the gas pipe. You mean the exhaust pipe for a fireplace or is it an actual gas pipe?
For the fireplace, the exhaust.
An exhaust pipe?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a direct vent.
It's a direct vent, okay. Well, those aren't necessarily things we take directly into consideration, but we understand that there's some sort of hardship on the part of the, not necessarily within the definition of what's required in the statute, but it's certainly something that would impede his ability to continue to utilize what he has there now. Is there anything else, Mr. Human?
No.
Okay. Gentlemen, are there any other comments or anything else we think you need to address given that this was continued in case I missed anything, because my memory's not as good as it once was? What do you say, Doctor? Nothing, okay. Actually, please, come forward. Please state your name and address.
Stanley Levine, 22 Onyx Drive, immediately abutter to 26. And I have no concern with him putting up the ADU as he would like it done. So I'm in favor of him being able to do it.
And the other, your immediate neighbor to the west?
Immediate to the west, correct.
Okay. Well, that's always the one that we're most concerned with, at least from a practical standpoint, but then again, they still have to meet the criteria. But they do have representation. Mr. Romanelli, would you come forward? Is there anything else that you think we need to know since the last time you came before us? Anything changed since the last time you came before us?
No, nothing really has changed at all, just because I know Joe's concern about aesthetically trying to attach it to the existing dwelling was really going to change the look and the outcome of his, of existing house, so he didn't really want to go that route if need be. He did mention that if it was a deal breaker, he would somehow attach a roof at least to connect the two dwellings together with sort of an overhang and a walkway underneath it if that would.
That wouldn't necessarily meet the qualifications under the bylaw. I think it has to be a conditioned space. That's my understanding. It has to be, the attachment has to be a conditioned space. But.
It's not that. You're still, to meet the requirements, he has to be 10 feet away from the property line. I think the only way would be to attach it to the property, to attach it to the existing structure.
So I see what you mean.
And reduce the size to 16 feet. We talked about this. Now, the roof, and I think with the ADU, it doesn't have to be attached. You can be either attached or detached. The issue here is the setback and whether the setback of, I mean, whether this is, if we didn't have the living space on top or on the second floor, would that be different than if you have a living space on the second floor? I mean, we granted before, we granted garages that closer within the setbacks.
We have, we have, but we're also concerned about the fact that ADUs are relatively new.
That's exactly why we, yeah, what we talked about, so.
Mandates coming down from the state.
Yeah.
And, you know, how things are going to be perceived moving forward. But again, these things, these cases are case by case, they're unique. This is one in which we have an immediate abutter who's saying that he has no concerns about the proximity to the property line. I take it that he's in support of it. This is a public hearing, so at this point in time, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in support of this petition? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? So I can report to the viewers at home, other than Mr. Levine, there's no one else that's spoken in support, and there's no one that spoke in opposition. And we did have a gentleman here the last time, at least, Mr. George was here. He didn't necessarily, my interpretation was not necessarily that he was in opposition to it, but just a concern about how things would be moving forward with proximity to property lines. All right. So if there are not any other questions of the petitioner's representative at this point in time, we can move along.
Sure. I have no questions.
All right.
Additional questions?
I think we've got some proposed findings. The subject property is located at 26 Onyx Drive and is also known as Dartmouth Assessors map 135 lot 57. The property has been owned by Joseph Machado since May 2010 and is located in the single residence A zoning district. The petitioner seeks to construct an 18-foot by 36-foot detached garage with living space above a distance of four feet from the side yard property line where 10 feet is required. Petitioner seeks relief from 375-7.4D 4AB exemptions from setback requirements for buildings or structures in existence prior to October 26, 1993, to have a minimum of 10 feet, 10-foot minimum setback from side and rear property lines. The board finds that the requested variance meets the statutory requirements of Mass. General Law 48, Section 10. Now, gentlemen, open to any, you can interrupt me at any point in time if you have any additional language or anything that needs to be, that you think would tighten this up. The first prong is there are circumstances related to soil shape and topography that especially affect the subject property that do not generally affect the zoning district in which the structure or land is located. The lot has a unique shape wherein it is narrow and long. The existing home and its location in relation to the lot boundaries poses limitations to any lateral expansion of the dwelling. So part two, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. The expansion slash addition of a garage will enhance the petitioner's use of the property wherein petitioner and family members will be able to garage a vehicle and provide storage for their personal property. The garage will allow for the storage of an automobile off the roadway and out of view from neighbors. Well, that was before I knew it was an ADU.
No, I mean.
Is there something else you'd like to be put in there?
I think maybe the.
Addition of an ADU will enhance the petitioner's use?
I think the hardship may be the modification to the existing house.
I'm all ears if you've got some language to propose.
Or.
What do you suggest?
So we've established that the location of the expansion is the only, is the only available spot on the property because of the, you know, the location of the house and the pool. So this is, this is one.
Is there not some wetlands on this property?
Yeah, I thought there was something in the back.
It might have been.
Some wetlands. I like the shape, but the hardship, I think.
I don't think, I think there was a comment the last time that there was some concern about where it was in relation, it may not be on the property, but as far as the distance.
Southeast corner or something.
Yeah.
It's not.
What is, what is this delineation here? Do you know what this delineation is? Is that a fence of some type possibly?
Yeah.
Is that fenced and posed? Oh, yeah, says here, stockade fence.
But I think there was something that said there was some wetland in the back.
If I may, I think, I think it was Mr. Garrett was concerned that if we, if this gets accepted, that we would have to at least fill out the A1 application, because there are some wetlands probably about 85, 90 feet off that southeasterly property.
Yeah, outside the jurisdiction, I think.
All right, so there's nothing specific.
Well, there's some wetlands in the back.
There is. Well, it says here, there's a wooded area. This is reading from the conservation comments to us. There's a wooded area at the southwest corner of the property, and that straddles adjacent parcels. Without doing a ground assessment of the situation to assess the ground, actual ground conditions, the conservation staff cannot indicate that there are no wetland issues. So you can't say one way or the other.
Substantial hardship, I think, meeting the 10-foot setback would require substantial modification to the existing dwelling structure and that would impose, you know, that would involve substantial hardship to the petitioner.
Well, the thing is, is he doesn't have to change the house. He can continue living in it the way he's living in it now.
No, no, I'm saying you need to, well, you block the windows, you have to do.
I think I kind of touched upon it on the other one, which was, the existing home and its location in relation to the lot boundaries poses limitations to any lateral expansion of the dwelling. So I could, we could say, we could elaborate a little bit further. Is that what you're trying to do, is elaborate on that?
Yeah, I mean, the hardship. The second one is the hardship.
I agree.
Yeah, and hardship is, it'll be substantial modification to the existing dwelling that would.
All right, so. The, I'm not following your train of thought, that's my problem. Otherwise, I'm usually pretty good at this.
Yeah, I'm trying. The, so you would have to modify the facade, you block the windows, you have to relocate.
But you'd have to do it in order to do what? In order to merge the two properties?
Well, in order to meet the setback.
Okay.
That's what we're saying.
So the addition of a garage that could meet side yard setbacks would require the petitioner to substantially modify.
The western facade of the property.
The western.
Side.
Side of the home. Which would involve a substantial hardship. How's that?
Yeah.
Good enough?
Yeah.
You'll try to read my writing, right? Okay. Moving on to subpart three. But now, what do you say about that language that I have there? Basically, leave some of the other as an additional that it will enhance the petition.
Enhance, that would be probably desirable relief will not be.
Okay, we could do that too.
Right.
So it says, desirable relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. The proposed garage will be in keeping with the character of the home in general and the general neighborhood. And it also would allow the petitioner and family members to garage a vehicle and provide storage for their personal property. Let's do that. All right. And then we'll put here, subpart four, the variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The proposed garage design is aesthetically pleasing and is in keeping with the intent or purpose of the bylaw.
Or in harmony with the surrounding.
And is in harmony.
Surrounding.
Is in harmony with the character of the, of the neighborhood. You're supposed to be doing this for me.
Isn't it a turn?
All right. And the usual restrictions, the petitioner will secure all necessary permits and approvals from all applicable boards and agencies, and all conditions associated with previous variance is issued for this property shall remain in effect and adhered to by the applicant if applicable. All right, gentlemen, before I close the public hearing, are there any comments that anyone either, also our alternate members, any comments that you have?
I have none.
I, I have nothing.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing for ZAV case 25-3.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. So gentlemen, if there's any more comment, we can still, we can discuss. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
You looking at me? I make a motion that we approve the variance for 26 Onyx Drive case ZAV-25-3 with the proposed findings and conditions previously stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Good luck.
Thank you.
So moving on to the next matter that's on for tonight, I have to recuse myself. Frankly, one of the petitioners or the petitioner's representative is a relative, so I will have to step down, and we're going to have to reconfigure the board. So we'll take a short recess.
The zoning board of appeal is back in session. Just for the record, for those who are watching at home also, I'll be chairing the second case as Attorney Maderas indicated. He has a conflict as one of the applicant's attorney is related. And on this case, it would be myself, the vice chair. With me is Attorney Feria and also Attorney Hume will be the voting members on this case. So, the second case this evening and the last case is special permit 25-3. The petitioner applicant is Kevin Maderas and he's also the representative. And the owner is Bradford Nimek.
Nimek.
Nimek. Subject property is located at 613 Fisher Road. It's MAP 32 lot 40. It's located in the single Residence B district and also in the Aquifer 3 overlay district. This case was advertised on May 1st, 2025 and May 8th, 2025. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the butters list.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we do have a butters list. If anybody wishes to look at the butters list, it's at the ZBA office. So, the petitioner seeking a special permit to have plumbing installed in the proposed 48 by 36 D-Tash garage with bathroom and kitchenette. And this is per Article 8, Section 375-8.3b, special permit uses. Before we open the public hearing, we do have some comments. And generally, it's one on this petition. And the first one is from the building commissioner. And I would just briefly... So, this is the building commissioner saying that we... The applicant can't not... He cannot grant a building permit because the... He needs a special permit from the zoning board of appeal. And this is per Section 375-8.3, special permit uses. Any accessory building or structures with kitchen or bathroom facilities, accessory building or structures within which a kitchen, wet bar, bathroom, or any plumbing is installed, such as, but not limited to, cabanas, garages, or studios, such an accessory use is allowed by special permit granted by the board of appeal. So, that's why. We also have the standard comments from DPW to... They have to be in compliance with the construction in terms of stormwater management, I guess, and erosion control. There's also some comment from the fire department, conservation, and board of health. The applicant's representative, if you don't mind, if you can go up to the podium and explain to the board what you're trying to do.
Good evening. I'm Attorney Kevin Maderas. My office is located at 286 Union Street in New Bedford. I'm here representing the homeowner Bradford Nimek. And he lives at 613 Fisher Road, which is also our locus. Mr. Nimek is looking to construct a 36 by 48 garage. As you said earlier, Mr. Chairman, we're here seeking a special permit under Article 8, Section 375-8.3. And the reason being is that he's looking to put a bathroom and a kitchenette in this garage, Your Honor. I mean, Mr. Chairman. If you look at the architectural plans, we can start off with the floor plan since we're on the bathroom and kitchenette subject. As you can see, there is... I can't read these numbers. As you can see, the bathroom area is 6.5 feet by 12 feet. And right outside the bathroom is the kitchenette. It consists of a sink and a oven with stove with a range, a microwave range above it. So, it's very, very limited in the area. And you can see the square footage in the bathroom is very, very limited also. The sole purpose of this garage is for storage. Mr. Nimek has farm equipment. He has a John Deere 310 backhoe. He has dirt bikes, ATVs. So, he needs room for storage. So, that's the main purpose. And as you can see, you know, the garage door height is 12 feet in order to get his backhoes in and out of both ends of the garage. We also have a loft area, which again, additional storage. Mr. Nimek has no intention whatsoever of using this as an additional living unit. We discussed this prior to submitting the application with the building department. And, you know, we could've submitted an application with an ADU and wouldn't have to be in front of this board here today. But he did not want to put a bedroom in there. He wanted this solely as a bathroom and kitchen area for his use in the garage. And it also, you know, he could use it as a pool house because it abuts the pool itself with the overhang in front of the pool. So... And he's perfectly fine with normal restriction regarding it not being used as an additional living unit. So... If we look at the exterior... So, the exterior of the garage has an overhang. It's 12 feet by 48 feet. And again, it faces the pool. The aesthetics of it, so it will be cedar impression shingles, asphalt roof shingles to match his home. So, you know, I feel that it would, you know, fit in into the neighborhood. Let's see. If we can look at the site plan, you'll see the... So, we're here before you just for a special permit because of the kitchenette and for that bathroom. You know, we met all of the other requirements. It is in Aquifer District. We met the requirement to that. We meet all the offsets. We're working diligently with the board of health as to the septic system and the discharge of that. We're also working with Mr. Garrett with Concom regarding adding some additional flaggings. He had a concern with that. So, we're working on that also. Even though it, you know, on the plan, it shows we're outside the buffer area. He wanted some additional work done to confirm that. So, I would say that with the addition of this garage, there will not be detrimental to the neighborhood and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. And we respectfully ask that this board grant the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Maderas. Any of the board members have questions for Attorney Maderas?
I just have a quick question. The bathroom, is the bathroom gonna have a shower?
Yes, I think it's on the right-hand side. That's a stand-up.
I wasn't sure whether it was shower or storage.
Yeah, it's a stand-up shower. I don't think... There's no tub to it.
All right. And because they're in an Aquifer District, is there... They're not in an Aquifer District?
Yeah, I'll go through this. But I have a question about that.
Okay.
But let's see. But I think they... They're fine, but the way the bylaws, I'll explain that. But...
I was gonna ask the same question. It looks like there's a stand-up shower in there.
Yeah. I mean, there's a pool house.
Yeah. I didn't realize there's a pool house until I just heard that.
So, any other questions?
I have no other questions.
All right. So, just a couple of comments. First of all, the site plan does not show the 12 by 48. And the reason I bring this up, because it's part of the structure. I'm not concerned by the setbacks because you meet the setbacks. It's in the front. But it would affect the calculation, the impervious calc. Okay? So, that's one thing. We need to add it to the site plan. Normally, we do show... I mean, it's part of the structure, but the structure itself, I understand, is 36 by 48. But we need to add the roof as part of the... Similar to shed. It's a building, basically. And that's my question. I don't have an issue with the, you know, with this at all. This is... We granted those before. And I talked to the building commissioner also. I don't think we can... Normally, we would add the condition that this cannot be turned... There'll be inspection because we don't want it to be another unit. But now with the ADU, by all means, I mean, if you meet the requirements of the ADU, you can go back to the building department. And if you meet the requirements, he can issue a building permit. So, we don't wanna put the condition that this cannot be turned into another living space.
I don't think it can.
No.
1,700 square feet.
No, no. No, he doesn't have the structure. If he can only meet 900, only 900 feet of the structure, would have to be dedicated to living space.
I think that's an issue, though. The structure itself is 1,700 square feet.
Yeah, but he's not... I mean, the only way he can... Probably, he would use the second floor. But if he can dedicate 900 square feet and meets the requirement, he can issue a building... The building inspector would be able... So, if we put a condition that can opposite to what we wanted to do... So, we're not going to add that condition. But the...
Excuse me. Don't we always add that condition?
Yeah, but this is before they passed the ADUs.
I know that. I've been saying this. This is a different set of circumstances. It's not a 900-square-foot building, right?
Right.
So, how do we put that together and say, "This is 1,700 square feet," you say?
Well, I mean, what's the 36 by 48?
It's 36 by... It's...
36 by 48.
48. Yeah, 1,728.
Yeah.
But part of that 1,728... The ADU doesn't... The structure doesn't have to be 900 square feet, just the structure itself. You can put a garage with 900 square feet on the first floor and 900 feet, square feet on the second floor.
I agree. Because you don't count the garage.
They don't count the garage. So, if he could... He will have to go back with the floor layout showing that he's only using 900 square feet of this structure to be...
If you wanted to expand the second level to 900 square feet, you could probably do that.
It's a lot less than that anyways. I don't think it's an issue. But what I'm saying, that we cannot put this anymore on conditions, on buildings that comes with the special permit to install plumbing because it's changed in the zoning, basically.
I don't know. I'm a little bit confused because if Mr. Maderas just said that on this building here, he's willing to put a condition on it that it's not gonna be used for housing, why do we have to say we can't put that on there?
Because I don't think he can do anymore.
Well, if he says... I don't want that on there. I'm not suggesting that. I thought his philosophy was, "We've got a plan in front of us. They wanna put a full shower, a bathroom, and a kitchenette." And he said it's not gonna be used for living expenses.
Right. What if they change their minds five years from now?
Like, come back?
Yeah, but what's that got to do with what he's saying today?
Okay. I mean, I don't, you know, I'm not sure if we can...
I don't really care. If you wanna modify that and say, "Look, we have no plans to put it in there, but we don't..." I agree with the chairman. We don't wanna condition that.
We can indicate in the findings that the applicant stated that this is not gonna be, I don't know.
I'd rather not do that, though.
In the finding, okay.
I'd rather not do that.
Okay, let's not do that.
I did mention that because it's customary.
Yes.
But it was customary up until the new ADU law came out. So, I think it has changed recently.
Right, because...
And when I say recently, probably within days or weeks.
No, I agree. So, I think if... I'm looking at this plan, so I don't have any problems with it.
Right.
If we just say, "Look, we're giving a special permit and forget the problem." I don't think we have to go to the next step to say, "We're gonna limit this so he can't use it for an apartment or whatever," you know? Just, I think we should be voting on the special, as you said, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
On the special permit to place plumbing there.
Right.
Right?
Right.
That should be the issue.
Yeah. Now, when it... That's it. Exactly. Now, the Aquifer with the lot coverage, they're not... They're less than the 10%. But I think if we...
Read on the site plan, it says 6.
Right.
So, yeah.
So, if you look at the lot coverage, I think that's why I mentioned you will have to revise that lot coverage. It's not gonna go... It's probably gonna go a fraction of a percent because the lot is almost 10 acres. But in the zoning bylaws, I believe before, any lot that had over 10% of lot coverage or over 2,500 square feet of impervious, that was considered an existing non-conforming. You might wanna check with the building inspector on that. You might want... Just to clean things up, just legally, because, you know, I don't think anybody's gonna appeal or...
Yeah, no.
But, you know, but we're being consistent because the lot coverage is over 2,500 square feet.
Yes, I believe it is.
Yeah, so it's a non-conforming use. So, it would be a special permit to...
Bottom left.
The plan says the lot coverage is 14,000. Oh, wait a minute.
No, no. That's not the percentage. Impervious. That's the square footage. Impervious square footage, yeah.
Oh.
So, it's over 2,500 square feet. When you're over 2,500 square feet, it's not allowed. And I can reference, I think, you know, this is... Let me see my package. I have the section. I printed it, actually. But check with the building inspector.
Okay.
If you need, just modify either... We can vote on a special permit tonight for the... To...
For the plumbing.
For the plumbing.
Right.
But if he needs... I mean, he would have to revise the table anyways. But that, I don't have an issue with that. If you revise the table and provide us with an updated plan...
We will do that.
For the records, we've done that before. And also, check with the building inspector if you need, because you're modifying existing non-conforming use. It's not an issue at all because you're still under the 10%. But in the bylaws, unfortunately, if you're over 2,500 square feet of lot coverage, impervious or 10%, whichever is greater, and I just... I had... I just printed the...
Okay, you're right.
Oh, right here. Yeah. And our bylaws, so any expansion or modification of non-conforming use would trigger a special permit, right? Now, why you're in existing non-conforming? Because in the Aquifer, 1, 2, 3, lot coverage above 10% or lot coverage above 2,500 square feet of any lot, whichever is greater, that's not allowed, right? You're already non-conforming. You follow?
Or greater, though, right?
Lot coverage above 10% or lot coverage above 2,500 square feet of any lot, whichever is greater. I mean, you're above the 2,500 square feet, right?
Mm-hmm.
Just for clarification, and this is more procedural than anything else, are you talking about the increase is more than 2,500?
No, no, no. That's the... This is the prohibited uses, 375-28.5.
I don't have it in front of me.
I do have it, but, I mean, I just printed it off. So, just check with the building inspector. Again, if it's not applicable, all we have to do, just revise the table for the lot coverage. You just have to add the 12 by 48.
Okay.
It might change the percentage by a fraction of a percent, you know? It's not, you know, it's not gonna trigger any, you know? It just to be consistent with the site plans and the architectural plans. You know, if it was something like a 4 by 4 or whatever, but it's a 12 by 48, so it's substantial, you know? And we don't want you to go to the building department and say, you know, "We..." You don't show the porch on the site plan or whatever, you know?
Mm-hmm.
And then we can, you know, if the building inspector says, "Yeah, you need a special permit," or he might say, "You don't need a special permit," then you don't have to. But if you need a special permit for the lot coverage or the modification of the existing non-conforming use, you can come back here with a separate application and it shouldn't be an issue anyway. But I don't see any issues with the structure itself. I mean, you meet all the setbacks, all the high requirements, you know, with your lot coverage is within what's allowable in the district. Your, you know, we've granted dozens of these things since I've been on this board and it's not... You're not... Even if by right now with the ADU, you can still have the option to convert 900 square feet of this structure into another unit. That's up to you. I'm not, you know... I know probably that's not your intention, but, you know, so...
Yeah, it's not at this time, no.
Well, since this is a public hearing, and is there anyone in the audience who's... Who would like to voice their... Either their support or their opposition to this case? Any questions from the board members standing here to the applicant? No. So, at this time, how would you like? We can proceed with this application as with the installing plumbing and an accessory structure. And then we'll leave it, we'll up to... Attorney Maderas will have to modify the lot coverage just to add... Modify the site plan to show the 12 by 48 porch on the site and come back with the revised site with the adjusted lot coverage. And meanwhile, please check with the building commissioner, see if you need to apply for a special permit for expansion or modification of existing non-conforming use. That's what it is. It's because you're in Aquifer and you have over 2,500 square feet of impervious coverage.
So, Mr. Chairs, I understand that if... Would it be... It's appropriate to have a motion under 25-3 for a special permit to grant the special permit for the installation of the plumbing as provided in the plans of interest.
Correct. And this is what's in front of us tonight, yes.
And no wild parties there either, you know? It's just...
Before we do that, so we haven't closed the public hearing, but is there... Nobody's... There's no one in the audience anyways for this, but any other questions?
I have none.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing. Second.
On special permit case 25-3.
25-3, second.
You don't wanna make certain findings first?
We can, yeah. I mean, because...
Can you give a report from the petitioner?
Sure. If we don't... We'll keep it open in case we have to talk to Attorney Maderas. It's just straightforward, but, you know, so... Yeah. We have some findings. Oops, sorry. So, the subject property is located at 613 Fisher Road, Dartmouth, and is also known as MAP 32 lot 40 on town of Dartmouth, SSSMAP. The property has been owned by Bradford and Nicole Nimek since 2012. Is that right? I added because Nicole was on the... But Bradford owns it since 2012, so it doesn't matter, yeah? Both names were on the... And is located in the single Residence B zoning district in the Aquifer Zone 3 overlay. Currently, there is a residential dwelling with a pool and concrete patio. The property is serviced by a private wall and a private septic system. The petitioner is seeking a special permit per Article 8, Section 375-8.3b to construct a 36 by 48, 1 1/2 story... I called it storage pool house, but we're calling it garage, garage slash pool house or garage slash storage. Garage slash storage structure with a 14 by 48 covered porch, including plumbing fixtures. The first floor would include a bathroom with a shower, sink, and a toilet, and a kitchenette area with a sink and a cooking stove. The plans also show access to the second floor to a storage space 14 feet wide by 48 feet long. That's the attic storage that you have. There are wetlands along the northeast corner of the property, and the petitioner is working with the Dartmouth Conservation Commission to determine if the proposed structure is subject to the Conservation Commission jurisdiction. You work it out with Conservation. We have no jurisdiction over that. The petitioner is proposing to connect the roof runoff from the existing dwelling and the proposed storage or garage slash storage structure to an onsite infiltration system in compliance with the Aquifer 3 overlay requirement. The proposed storage, garage slash storage structure will be in compliance with required setbacks and height restriction in the single Residence B district and lot coverage in the Aquifer Zone 3 overlay. The board finds that the proposed 1 1/2 story garage storage structure is not detrimental to the neighborhood and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning Those are the findings. Any other findings that you might...
I have none.
I have none. Okay. Now, with the second part, the petitioner and subsequent owner will secure all... The standard language, they have to secure all permits. And any restrictions or conditions imposed from any variances issued, I don't think there's any variances on this property, shall remain in full force and affect and must be adhered to by the owner. So, this is kinda standard we put on all site plans, the revised site plans. Probably, when you have a revised site plan, you can just give it to Michelle. You can update the file with that and reference the site plans and architectural plans. Anything else you think we need?
I have nothing.
Nothing. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Case...
Case number ZSP 25-3.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the public hearing is closed.
I make a motion that we approve the special permit request, case ZSP 25-3, 613 Fisher Road, Dartmouth, Mass., with the proposed findings and conditions previously stated. Road, Dartmouth, Mass., with the proposed findings and conditions previously stated.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good luck.
Good job, Mr. Maderas.
Thank you. I don't think we have, we have an administrative, but I think we're going to postpone this to the, maybe after the, the end of June.
July meeting?
Yeah, probably, because I. Requested the re-import. I don't know if you, yeah, you.
I have not received.
I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
And this way, and then after we can do the, the election. Any other items to be discussed or any?
I have none.
No? No? Motion, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move we adjourn.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you and good night.